Okay, I call to order the Roseville Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is August 20th, 2024. Thank you much. I see we have some people here tonight actually representing the chamber. Appreciate you guys coming out. We don't have a long agenda tonight, but just a couple items on there. I think our attorney is remote tonight. Can you hear me, Dave?
I can, sir, and I appreciate the board accommodating me here. I felt that it was probably not the right thing to expose poor Eric Marsh to this cough and fever that I am dealing with.
Very good, yeah. Appreciate you actually being able to join us. Now, with you, I know with some of the commissioners, there are special procedures. Any different procedures tonight, being you remotely?
No, sir. I don't fall under the remote participation provisions, and so I will serve at your pleasure, and you can keep me in or kick me out whenever you wish.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We'll keep you for a while at least, so thank you. All right, so with that, we've got a consideration of agenda, short agenda, so I will ask, is there a decision on that or a motion?
Is it move?
There's a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you, board. And then it's just a couple items. First thing we got is a Roseville Chamber of Commerce update. I see we got the chair president here and also the director or whatever he calls himself this time. So come on up, Phil, and kind of appreciate y'all coming out tonight, so thanks for always appreciate updates. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, guys and girls. He probably won't say anything. That's just how he is, though I try, try to bring him into it. So I meant to reach out to each one of the individual and go, hey, what are you going to ask me tonight? Because ask me questions, I'll tell you no lies. Things are going well at the chamber. Throw this, a couple of slides up here, but definitely not a lot prepared, other than just some membership stats, and I got some good news about our board of directors, but would love to entertain any questions you have, to make sure everything's clarified. This is, you saw this last time. I'll start out first. We have an energized board. This year, we have gone forth with the board saying, we are not just volunteers, we're engaged volunteers. If you take a look at this right here, the names in blue are new board members as of this year, you know, since January 1st. In fact, last week, we just brought on three more, Yandrie, Sherry, and Gordon. I'm sure some of you know Gordon from his work over in Wake Forest, and he's been with the Roseville Chamber for a long time. So all these new volunteers are super energized to jump in with both feet, take on responsibilities as working volunteers, and that's going to be the key to our success this year and next as we prepare for 2025, is, you know, many hands make light work, and that is definitely true in a volunteer-led organization like the chamber. So very excited to have a full board complement of 12 members today. Excited about that. What can we do with it? That's the exciting part. Now, just some stats on membership. On the left side, you look at a monthly, from August of last year to August of this year, number of members. I know it's a little bit small. What I want you to see is the big blue bars. The bars are much bigger in the last six months than they were anytime prior to that. That's the new member joins. So we've got, it was a little slow in 2023. That was symptomatic of what was going on in the chamber at that point. We had an acting executive chair with Barbara Timmons. Rachel had left, so it was a little bit rudderless, but they did a good job of keeping the motor running. What we found coming in was that we were actually losing more members than we were gaining the first few months of this year. It's kind of a hangover from them perceiving not really getting the benefit for their money, but when they'd call, I would get a call, and I'll throw Jen at Local Charm under the bus. Jen called and said, why did you autocharge my credit card? I really didn't want to renew this year. And she never has an opinion, right? So I went ahead and visited her. I said, Jen, why do you want to renew? Well, I didn't get anything for my money. So 45 minutes later, she agreed to renew, and hopefully I'll get her on as ambassador, at least as a working volunteer with the chamber. So we're saving, if I can talk to them, as long as it's not a business shutting down or redirection of the business, we're saving the ones that don't want to renew, mostly. I'd say about 90% of them, nine out of 10. On top of that, with the new social media, new marketing, we're getting a lot of new members. If you look at down below, the drop members has really slowed down considerably. July was our best month with seven new members, and really, the people leaving the chamber is tapering off to almost nothing, which is exciting for me. And I think that's because we're connecting with them with the events, we're connecting with them with our volunteers, we're connecting with them through the board, and they're seeing the energy and the excitement being reapplied to, you know, this isn't rocket science, this we're not throwing any new events out there. There's no new program that we've thrown at them, it's just that we've energized what we were already doing. A chamber provides opportunities for business owners to engage in the community, to meet other businesses they want to do business with, to meet customers they want to do business with, and we're just, we're getting louder, right? Through social media, through our events, and letting people know about that. So I think that's why we're seeing fewer drops, or definitely that's why we're seeing more gains. A lot of my friends from networking around the area are coming into Roseville going, I want some of that excitement. Come on, Phil, sign me up. Where do I sign up? Click here. Membership types, most of it, granted, is the lower-level entry-level development and growth partner. We are really setting our sights on getting some of the larger members back in as well. That's the stretch goal, is to see more than just one corporate member, one and two executive and five community leaders. I think as the town grows, a lot of that's going to come organically, but we can't wait on that. We've got to go out and get them. So that's a goal for growth, is to get some of the larger members onboard. And then just the last one on the lower right is a trend for membership since day, really, 2017. I don't know what day, April, do you know what day one of the chamber was before your time?
What do you mean, day one? It was originated?
When did it form?
It wasn't a chamber, it was the Business Alliance of Roseville, something like that, but it was back in the 60s, maybe?
All right, well, I'm not tracking that far back. The charts in our software just went back to 2017. We've got a, today, we've got 178 active members. When I got on board, I think we had 170, we went down to about 162, so we're at 178 today and growing. So good news about that. Any questions on those stats? The MOU, Michael and I worked through a couple of changes you guys approved at the last meeting. You've seen this, I don't need to go through that. We are engaging with the programs, mainly really, it's barbecue bands, which is coming up in September, September 28th, and then the next month will be the golf tournament, October 24th, and then Christmas parade, Santa's luncheon, and then the next big event in the spring will be the Women's Leadership Brunch, well, the award dinner, but I don't really consider that an event, that's more of a celebration, but the Women's Leadership Brunch is a big exposure for us, and we're working towards that. So thank you for the money, we are spending it, and spending it appropriately. I will mention on the financial side, I spoke to Michael earlier this week, he hit me a month ago, the night of the firehouse signover, hey, Phil, tell me about your taxes. I had a deer-in-the-headlights moment, so went back, talked to Terry Simmons, Terry, tell me about taxes. I'm working on them, but you've got to let me back into QuickBooks. So I did, and two weeks ago, Terry got us 21, 22, and 23 complete. Ken has signed them, they have been filed as of last week. So hopefully we're up to date. We had our bookkeeper do a second check on them, just to kind of inspect them and make sure that the work was done and looks good. So we have two professional financial people's opinions that thumbs up. I have sent them to Michael. We're open and transparent. Anything you want, we'll give it to you. We're your partner. So if you do find something, let me know, because I am not a financial expert, but I'll hunt it down and chew on it and try to get it fixed if there's anything wrong with it. Any other comments you would make about it?
No, sir.
Okay. And that's really all the information I had to give. Any questions?
Kudos to you all and all the work you're doing for the business leaders in Roseville. And I'm excited to see what will come with Cobblestone and Wallbrook, because there's a lot of partners, potentials, sponsors, new people, that I'm excited, that I know would want to be part of the chamber. So kudos, and looks like a lot of hard work ahead.
I look forward to earning my position every day. This is an exciting time for the town and therefore the chamber, so I'm glad to be a part of it.
And I would suggest you stay focused on promoting your members, because that's the probably seminal goal of the chamber, because that will help you build your membership.
That's what your partner in life told me when we met with Teresa, that is what Jen at Local Charm told me, that is what I hear pretty much every time I talk to an existing member, so loud and clear. And that is, that is the challenge, right? It's easy to get new members. I say that easy. It's much easier to get new members than to engage the membership base and get them engaged. We have fun events. Ronnie comes to them, Mayor Kern comes to them. We'll have 35, 45 people there. We had it at the pool sidebar last month. Those are fun, but I look around the event, and it's everybody I know, right? So how do I get the other 150 members there? That's, and I talk to my peers in the other chambers, that's their challenge too.
It's a challenge across the board.
And you know this as well.
It is. But you get out of it what you put into it. It's not your responsibility to make them attend, to get them to know people. You help, you offer things, but it's the business leaders' responsibility to make it happen for themselves.
Which comes to mind, we did something for the local business owners, some people who don't normally come to our events, last weekend, the cash mob.
Yeah.
Couldn't be there, because I, my wife commanded that I would be at a family wedding on Saturday. Did any of y'all make it over to the intersection?
I was out of town, but I would love to know how it went.
I was kind of curious about that myself.
I did get a comment from Susan Crumpler, basically saying lots of people coming out. I don't know whether that was 10, 20, or 100, I don't, but at least there were some new faces coming out. I will get over and talk to Susannah Zantigas and the other ladies and see how they did last weekend soon.
I'd love to hear how it went, since I wasn't going to be there.
How do you feel your marketing/communication has changed? Because I think that was one of the other areas that I heard from some of the current business owners, is just the communication and advertisement, if you will. How have you taken time to address and/or plans to address?
When I was a business owner in Wake Forest and looking at the Roseville Chamber to become as a member in 2023, I would say that I was aware of it, I saw posts, but I can't really say good or bad about what the marketing was like, because I wasn't the one doing it, and I was just seeing it as a potential member. I will say, when I got here, I took the lessons I learned as a business owner, a small service company, Nerd's To Go, and I learned that you've got to hit them from multiple vectors. I was on six or seven platforms, Yahoo, Google, Facebook, LinkedIn, Nextdoor, God, you know, all of the different platforms, doing something out there, posting pictures on a week, it's consistency. So that is what I'm bringing to the chamber, that's what I have seen as most important than anything, is getting people exposed to the new chamber. So we just brought these three new directors on, there will be a blast. Welcome, our new directors! And we'll go out on LinkedIn, Facebook, there'll be an email, it'll be in the newsletter. So to answer your question, what I'm trying to do is take my lessons learned and broadcast and be as loud as possible and clear and concise as possible through as many channels as possible. I'm taking feedback from my members and my board on our newsletter. We've made a lot of changes to the newsletter in terms of its format and appearance. It's not just a kind of a long text-based document with a couple headlines, we're throwing pictures in there, we're throwing colors in there, trying to make it, you want to catch the eyeballs. So from social media, yeah, we're trying to catch the eyeballs by being creative. From just in terms of marketing communications, it's not just social media, it's, like I said, every single vector I could possibly find, every path I can find to get my message, our message in front of those potential members and existing members, we'll take it.
Thank you.
And by the way, Gordon Coleman has just joined, and now that he's been relieved, not relieved, that's the wrong way to say it, now that he is aged or timed out of his Wake Forest Chamber responsibilities on their board, having on our board with his experience on social media is going to be a true gem. Remember the question you asked me tonight? Ask me again in 90 days, and let's take a look and see if there's a difference from bringing him on board, because he's already energizing us with some ideas, challenging me to do things, to find time to do things that I hadn't even thought about doing before on social media. So excited to have him on the board. Gordon Coleman, Gordon Coleman, he's in the web development, webpage development, social media development business, that's been his lifeblood for as long as I've known him.
All right.
Do we run away now?
No more questions from the board? Thanks, guys, for coming out, appreciate it. I know you've got a couple of big events coming up, the barbecue is one of the biggest ones, right?
We do.
And there are a lot of good words and a lot of, I've had some discussions, people have called and a couple of things on that, hope that goes really well.
We can't do without you.
First time you did that in a while.
Yep, absolutely. We are working every day with, whether it's the fire chief trying to figure out how to hang a banner, which is, looks like it's not going to happen.
Is this the old banner?
Well, we can't use the old banner, because it features sponsors who no longer are sponsors, and where we were going to put it, there's new streetlights, and the only other option that the chief found was up by the closure, which is not going to get us $1,600 worth of exposure, which is what that banner costs. So we're going to go take that $1,600 and reapply it to signage in front of businesses and things like that. So going to get loud very quickly on it.
Well, good luck on that.
Good luck. Have fun.
Sign up for a slot to volunteer on the 28th.
What time is the event again? Please, on the 28th?
12 to 6.
Thank you.
That's September 28th.
I've been pegged as a judge.
Hey!
I'm a judge, too.
Hey!
Excellent.
How are your palates?
That was your idea.
Paul, you want to, you want to get in the dunking booth?
No.
No. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, you got to volunteer for the dunking booth.
What dunking booth?
If there's one, I'll get in.
Is this a Roseville tradition?
No.
We've had them before, but I think it's Fourth of July fireworks show we've had them or something, if I recall.
Yeah.
I don't think at the barbecue.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming out. Traffic impact analysis, the TIA discussion, come on up, welcome tonight, hope you're doing good.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Kern and Town Board of Commissioners.
Good evening.
I know you all are looking forward to this topic on the agenda, so we're going to talk about our TIA process. And why are we here to talk about the TIA process? Commissioner Alston, I hope I'm not disappointing you too much today, after our phone call this morning, and then you wondered why you didn't have anything in front of you for this agenda item. So that was on purpose, I said, so we're hoping for your first and natural reaction to this topic. First, why are we here? Why do we want to talk about this? Well, I'm a fan of making things easier, if possible, and I'm sure the development community is as well, so we have an opportunity to streamline the development review process with the traffic impact analysis piece. Second reason why we want to talk about this with you is to save staff time. Today at 2:00, I had a meeting with Mike Ella-Barger, Amy Stevens, and Amy Palom in finance. So this is a standing meeting we've scheduled. It's supposed to be 30 minutes. That meeting today took an hour and a half, and an hour of that, that hour extra was spent talking about some traffic impact analysis payments and things that have kind of lingered, and we're trying to figure out what happened with them, how do we deal with them, and it was challenging, we got through it, but an extra hour of time today for four people. So there is that pain point with finance and planning staff. And third, why are we here? The process for a traffic impact analysis is the same either way. Our land development ordinance prescribes what has to be in there, and it follows NC DOT standards. So what NC DOT says we need to do with that sort of thing, we do. Professional engineers prepare these reports, and whether they're preparing them with the town named as who the report is prepared for, or the developer, ethically, it's, for them, it's the same report. They're putting their seal on that report, so what they're putting in there is industry standard and fact-based. It's not pushed one way or the other to help a developer or the town, per se. So Chapter 8 in the land development ordinance is all about traffic, and a few key pieces from that. Our LDO says that development or redevelopment cannot adversely affect the capacity of streets and intersections to accommodate traffic safely. It also states that a TIA is required prior to the approval of any rezoning and/or site development plan if that development would exceed thresholds, and our threshold right now is 50 daily trips or 500, or 50 peak hour trips or 500 daily trips. Our ordinance also defines the minimum level of service, the study area, and the report contents. Again, those are industry standard items. Our level of service is cited at Level of Service D, and I know that sounds scary, and we've talked a little bit about that before, so you can't go below a Level of Service D, and if your starting point is already a D or an F, you can't make anything worse. So we're not here to make anything worse. I know traffic is a hot topic and, you know, sensitive topic for most people in a community, so it's important to know we're following industry standard and we're staying at a certain level of service.
Mayor, you've got a question about that?
Certainly.
So if there's a project that comes through and after it goes through your process, and you see that grade is an F, that pretty much has no chance of even making it past your process, right?
If something is an F, our ordinance states that whatever is developed cannot make it any worse. You're not, you cannot make anything worse than what it already is. So if you're coming in with that F, you get to keep the F.
Following up on that question, I believe recently, we had one that currently it's a C, and the proposed development would drop it to an F, and it was approved by our planning board. There's a rezoning request, and that, to me, shouldn't be allowed, and from what you're saying, it sounds like it shouldn't either. And I get it, it's not a final approval, but to me, if we know that that's the case and we know it will not ultimately be approved, is there a way to just stop it in its tracks and say, don't waste your time or money, because this isn't going to get approved, so?
Sure, that's a great point. If, maybe you can tell me later which project, just to make sure we're on the same page, can certainly point that out to the applicant and say, what can you do to get that level of service at the same point of where it already is?
Because I don't think we should do anything to make our traffic worse.
And that is what our ordinance states.
And yet we do. I mean, we'll talk about it, but I mean, we've got projects on Main Street, we've got projects on Roseville Road that do exactly that, that in my mind, I'm only one person, but we should not approve because it's degrading the traffic that's already not great.
Sure, and I know our town attorney always presses upon us that, you know, with a legislative case, you know, you all have the authority to make whatever decision you would like on that, and that seems like a reasonable piece to stand on.
Thank you.
Given that I was just referenced, let me throw in two clarifications. The planning director, I believe, is describing the way our ordinance is, but it isn't the way the ordinance must be. So our ordinance could be more aggressive with regard to required road improvements and what our standards are, and the staff will follow those standards, but at the end of the day, the governing body will have the ultimate say as to zonings, but as to objective matters like subdivision and construction drawings, there isn't any judgment. If it doesn't meet the ordinance standard, it cannot be approved.
And we're in the process of reviewing at least some of that today, are we not?
The?
The ordinance standards.
Just reviewing those with you all, and then a potential for an LDO amendment, depending on how this discussion goes.
Part of my lack of knowledge in this particular arena, so this question may seem redundant or very simplistic in terms. But if we're talking about rezoning or doing any type of restructuring or any type of development, and they're currently at a lower level grade of a C or lower, is not all new construction going to always delineate or decrease the traffic analysis set for that area? In other words, want to always go from a C to a D or to an F or something to that degree?
Not necessarily. The intent is when you build new roads, the connections should disperse the traffic. And then you often see with our traffic studies, the results or the recommendations from those will say, you need to add a lane to this road, you need to add a turn lane. That's a certain number of feet to be able to handle the cars that are coming in and out. So the traffic that's already going on the streets is not made worse.
And so to Commissioner Paul's point, to be, for my own clarity, if we're at a C, we can say to the developer, hey, listen, guys, we're not, we're not going down in terms of our traffic flow analysis. You need to bring up your standards to help us keep it at a C, if I'm understanding correctly this point. And is that standard across other development projects in other cities?
I am not sure. That's certainly something we could look into. I know where I have, one other place I've worked in the past, I think you were able to drop one letter, but not any more than that.
Can we have that, that type of data? Because I think that's good to lean on.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Certainly.
I think one of the things, maybe we could, maybe we talk about doing this in a future workshop, is have one of the traffic engineers that works for Campo and stuff to come over and talk to the board about what these letters actually mean.
Okay.
Because it's not like a school grade.
No.
It's not like A to Elf. And the largest grade they can give is an Elf. But, and an Elf means intersections is, you know, you've got several minutes of wait, I think.
Right. Means you might have to sit there at the light for two or three cycles.
An Elf like that is not like an Elf on Capitol bar.
Right. Oh, yeah, that's scary.
So, so I think, I think if you, I think like, for example, traffic engineers, they say a A is bad because a A is underutilized. You've probably heard that term.
You're exactly right.
It's underutilized and you're wasting money on a A and you don't need a A. And a B is the same thing. Because, you know, where you've got to spend your money on your roads and A and B is pretty bad because you're not utilizing the money you spend on roads. So what is a good number? So you've got to think of it like that, you know, where a C and D, I think they shoot for D, I think. I'm not exactly sure. But D means your road is utilized to the way it's engineered, I think.
Sure, and you're not waiting more than maybe one light cycle.
Right. It's engineered to handle so much. And a D is, I think a D, and maybe it's a C, or D is when it gets to a point that it's fully, they call it fully utilized of your design. So I think it'd be good for the board to kind of understand what these letters mean from a technical engineering perspective. Because you think, well, we want all our roads to be A. Well, that means, that's not a good thing.
That's the grade you want when you're in school.
Yeah.
Right.
That makes sense, guys?
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea.
It does.
Sure. Great idea. We can certainly make that, add that to the next steps. And then we, you know, after we have that discussion, we can see if there is anything we would like to change in that portion.
Who's our Campo representative now?
Austin Kiefer.
Austin.
I could ask Austin, who he might connect with to.
Because they got really good presentations on utilizing roads and they can kind of show us our areas and stuff like that and what that means and stuff.
Yes, and I know.
I think it'd help us overall when we think about these things in the future.
And I know the Campo staff have recently reached out and asked to meet with us and we had to reschedule based on the storm we had a couple of weeks ago. So I can certainly bring that up in that rescheduled meeting with them. Another note with our traffic impact analysis process, if the project that in question is next to a DOT road, which a lot of our projects, most of our developments are, NC DOT congestion management does have to approve the scope. So that is something that brings consistency to those reports. And then I mentioned, traffic engineers do prepare and seal the studies. So they're putting their seal on those studies. Like I said, they're industry standard and fact-based. So next steps, Mayor Kern will add what you said about scheduling a presentation with Campo and/or a traffic engineer who can talk to us about those levels of service in more detail. So that's, I mean, so that's a yes to more discussion needed. And if you all are in favor of us changing our TIA process so staff and finance don't have to manage it and we let developers contract directly with traffic engineers, we would need an amendment to LDO Section 8 Point D, preparation of TIA, because that does note applicants or developers do have to use one of our on-call traffic consultants to do their TIA. And that managing that contract and being the middleman between the development community and the traffic engineers and then managing the financial side with planning and finance, that's what's taking up so much time that we'd love to get rid of. So if we, if you all are okay with that, we'd like to do an LDO amendment again to 8 Point D. Yes, Commissioner Paul?
With respect to that, is there a concern that if the developers are working directly with the TIA analysts, that there might be some favoritism going on between them to show a better TIA analysis? We had a similar issue between the appraisers and the lenders and brokers in real estate. And they got rid of that and put it back to an independent third party for that very reason. And today, unfortunately, you're the independent third party. So is there any, should we be concerned about that possibility down the road if we do this?
That is, I believe that is totally up to you all if you have that concern. I don't have that concern because of the industry standard piece and the fact that professional engineers are sealing these reports. Like I'm a registered landscape architect and if I were working in the private sector and I put my seal on a set of plans, it would not, I wouldn't be showing favoritism to anyone. I would make sure that health, safety, and welfare were acknowledged. And I would imagine other engineers, professional engineers would be the same. So I don't have that concern, but, you know, it's, I'm not here to speak.
Sure.
For you all. I want you all to be comfortable. Just wanted to give this a shot.
Yeah, I think we did that before because it was a matter of transparency.
Sure.
Because it was always like a developer would come and say, well, our traffic study engineer is right here. If you want to talk to them, you're going, okay, well, that doesn't sound right. Because I think if you were going to get to the point where we broke it off of what we're doing right now, like I think you mentioned before, if we had a list of approved from us, that says, you know, the town has looked at these people and we approve these people. And if you want to use them, that's good. That's who we're looking for. If we want to get out of the process, I think at least having a list of people that we actually would approve for them to use, showing that we know that they're reputable.
Sure.
Dave got a question?
Yes.
Yes, Dave. Thank you, Mayor. To build upon what staff is pointing out, just in the effort of full disclosure, the traffic engineer is ethically bound to deliver an opinion that what has been delivered will provide a safe flow of traffic consistent with his engineering expertise. What he or she is not providing to you is the best solution if they are working for a private developer. They are presenting to you the cheapest solution that meets the ordinance. That is the difference between having your own transportation department reviewing solutions and having to rely exclusively upon the developer's engineer. That's, that's the challenge. In my private practice, I engage traffic engineers all the time and we sit down and we talk about what the pinch points are, both for the town and for our budget.
If, question, if, if we're intentional on making sure that our comprehensive planning, our traffic plans lay out the cross-sections we want, the thing, our expectations, does that essentially set a bar that they clear with their report? And so I think some of the confusion that we may have with the TIAs is that, or even the designs that they bring forth, is that we want a certain thing out of a road, like a Roseville Road, that is not reflected in a transportation plan based off conversations we had, things you all have learned, or thoughts over the last two years or what have you. And so maybe if we work on making sure that some of those declarations of cross-sections, street, street sizes, capacity, reflect what we really want out of it. I know that we're doing, we're updating our plans and such right now. Possibly the update of the comprehensive plan and those things of that nature will help us kind of alleviate some of the concern with the miss of that. Because when you say the cheapest, the cheapest way to achieve a thing, we establish what the thing is, if that makes sense. There is an efficiency or piece to all engineering. You're not trying to throw out the most expensive thing. But you are, you know, the safety measure on a lot of these things is a rule of seven, seven times, you know, when you put your stamp on it, you're liable for it. And so it will be safe. The thing is, what is that thing that we want them to build? And so if we set the expectations at a healthy place, then them putting out, saying this is the cheapest way to build that thing, doesn't really impact the safety of their thing since they put their stamp on it, if that makes sense. But I think it's a conversation, it's more so a question of if we do that, will that help us navigate that thing a little bit better?
It certainly would help. If that's directed at me, it certainly would help. The weakness, I think, for a town the size of Roseville right now is that for communities that have the structure that we're proposing, they have a transportation department that has its own staff engineers to provide that other expert opinion on the countervailing side. Perhaps we would need to have that if we no longer were engaging the engineer as our representative.
Love to jump in on that one for a moment. We do have Bolton &amp; Mink under contract as our town engineer. And we have two engineers who participate in our TRC. And they do review all development applications and traffic studies. And we could put more of an emphasis on them reviewing the traffic studies that come along with the rezonings and/or site development plans to make sure that we think they're in our best interest. That could be another avenue. We have been very pleased with Jackie Thompson and Brian Lox from Bolton &amp; Mink. They've been in front of you all a few times before. They definitely have our town's best interests at heart, being functioning members of our technical review committee.
I think we'd have to implement something like that, just to have some sort of balance and, because I'm not a traffic engineer, I don't know if anyone else on this day is. So we have to rely on someone. And right now, the independence that we have today works to our benefit. And if we lose that completely, I think we would rue that eventually. So having Bolton &amp; Mink, I think, is a good way to allow us to at least look at doing what you're proposing.
Okay.
So thank you.
And finally, we do get to set the standard. It sounded like what you were saying, Mr. Morris, is that we, as the town, get to set the standard of what we want, our expectations in our CDO process now, as we get ready to go into the finalization of future TIA events, okay? So maybe one of the things that I personally, as I was saying, I would like to see what other municipalities are doing in terms of grade level. But, you know, if there is a standard that has been stayed, that has been set that we could not necessarily mirror, but look at, I'd like to see that. Because it would be helpful to see what success looks like when they've set and established standards and more than one municipality would be great for me, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly. So it sounds like I have some homework?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Murray? Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you, how do you like your new facilities over there?
It's really nice. I'll have to come by and check it out. What did you think, Commissioner Austin?
I saw.
We're getting our conference table in, I think, tomorrow. The police department was kind enough to share a table and chairs that they're not using, so we're going to use that for a meeting space there.
And your printer should be in.
Printer's coming in Monday.
Oh, great. I got a place to go.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the closed session, number five. Before we do that, is any comments from the board? Or I guess, Dave, do you have any public updating, anything you want to do before we go into closed session?
No, sir.
Okay. Town manager?
One second. Let me pull this up.
While we're doing that, how about, how about the board? Anything the board want to report on? I think we got a senior citizen expo tomorrow, is that what it's called?
That's correct. Yes.
So, and that's here in our facility, so.
Community center, yes.
And that's anybody, anybody 55 and over?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
So, you know, just come and check it out. I think it's a lot of, be a lot of vendors and stuff, right? That's what Expo is and so.
What time is that?
It starts at 10:00?
I was thinking it's 10 to 2, 11 to 2, or something like that. I don't, I think it's 10 to 2.
10 o'clock. 10 o'clock in the morning.
One thing I wanted to share, the George Taylor Historical Marker Program was scheduled for this month, but it was moved to September. It'll be taking place on the first weekend of September. So there'll be a public unveiling of that marker. The thing that I wanted to share was the original date of that program was associated with Black August. And so Black August is a month-long commemoration that honors black freedom fighters and the black liberation movement, particularly those who have died in the hands of US authorities or in prison. And so the general gesture behind the marker is just to recognize certain people who have lost their life as a result of racism or in the name of the freedom fight to help overcome those different systemic issues that we've seen over time within, in our nation's history. So I just wanted to just make mention of that and that the original date was in correlation to what is something that's celebrated within the black community, Black August. There'll be several events through Durham, Raleigh, Black August in the Park is one of the biggest things that are celebrated through the months of August. But I wanted to also just mention that and tell everyone that it's something that we're looking forward to, the unveiling of the marker next month. And that's something that you will see leading up until, start seeing the next two weeks, remarketing and re-promotion of that event. Our next meeting will be right after Labor Day, which is a few days ahead of the unveiling. And so I just wanted to be proactive and just mention it to everyone and mention it to the community that may be watching that that event is coming up. And it's something that will be a very momentous occasion, something that the Public Works Department, all of us have been prepping for. And so you'll see at Main Street Park near the gazebo, there's already a concrete slab there for the placement of it. The marker was delivered safely and we have it in storage. And so we're preparing to have that event. But I wanted to just mention that and keep that on everyone's radar, that that is coming up. And also just connect it to the original date. And so that will be something that we would have talked about, but we'll share more education, more information about that, or education about that as we move towards the rescheduled event date.
So you mentioned that it's going to be marketed here in the next coming couple of weeks.
Yes.
Don't have any specifics of date and time?
So it'll be on, it'll be on that Saturday, the first Saturday of September, I believe it's the 7th.
The 7th.
And it'll be at, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM at Main Street Park.
Thank you.
And, but we'll run flyers again with the updated, we've been working with the Equal Justice Initiative in Wake County to put that together. There'll be some other events going on around it, but the public unveiling will be that Saturday at Main Street Park.
Can I ask one more question? So that's being marketed throughout Wake County?
Yes, it's been marketed throughout Wake County, it's been marketed by Wake County, and it's also being marketed by the Equal Justice Initiative or Institute that's based out of.
Montgomery.
Montgomery, Alabama.
Very good, thank you.
Any information with those flyers? If you could probably email it to us, so we can probably put it out on our platform.
Sure, we can do that.
That'd be good, too.
And I don't know if you mentioned it, but I think, I don't, I didn't think you did, but the reason it was postponed was the Tropic Storm.
Yes.
Because a lot of people's coming from out of town and, and you know, as you know, that Tropic Storm was Friday, I think.
Yes, it was that Thursday and Friday. A lot of flights were grounded. And because a lot, most of them were coming in on the Wednesday, and we're going to do preparation things ahead of that. There were, I think there are about eight different presenters that'll be presenting at the actual unveiling. So people that'll be sharing about history, a lot of the work they're doing, a lot of the research that they did to kind of connect and find, put, connect the dots to, to establish that as a, a marker-worthy event or occurrence. And so they were going to, it's a big education component that's attached to it. And so those people that are the subject matter experts would have been flying in, but it was dampened by Tropic Storm Debbie.
And we'll mention it again.
We will.
Business meeting before, before. The Saturday, it's Tuesday, Saturday before. So any, anything else, Eric? Is that all you have?
Oh, that's it.
Board, anything else?
Yes. As we all know, our intersection is a, a topic of much discussion. So can you provide us an update? Because by all appearances, it doesn't seem like a whole lot's going on. And there's grave concern that it will not be opened by September 15th, as we have stated thus far, so.
Yes, we're still aiming for opening the intersection for the week of September 15th. As you know, Tropics, Tropical Storm Debbie, which rescheduled that event, also took a week of work away from us. And so in general, it was never the intent of the reopen, reopening of it for everything to be done at the intersection. And I, so I think that's one thing that we want to clarify is that they were not going to do all the papers, they were not, they were basically going to do the main subsurface things. And so they're making progress on those. We had a meeting earlier this week, it was yesterday, with Fred Smith. I actually have a call I need to return after this meeting and how we can get more utility crews out to try to hit that deadline. What we'll see, what we're going to see is kind of like a trim, hopefully, is what we're trying to get approved by DOT, is a trim back version in which traffic will be let through, but all four ends won't be open. And so we'll still be encouraging people to use some of the local detours, just because of the volume of traffic. Most people will do it just because they don't like encountering flaggers anyway. But the intersection should be closing, should be opening as planned the week of the 15th.
Contingent upon weather allowing, correct?
Yes, but we don't, we're not anticipating for, for all of you who know the works and words of prayer, we prayed away rain for 4th of July, and it rained everywhere except for here. And so if I were to just remind you of that prior works, and so, and that's just my, my faith, and I'm hoping that that will be the case. In general, we've been doing a lot of work to help move this, move this forward. As you know, same thing we mentioned with the TIA, there are a lot of things that we don't do internally with the traffic engineers. And so us, we're really having to rely on our relationships, our partnership with Fred Smith Company, Raleigh Water, DEQ, NCDOT. And we're having conversation, we've been having conversations and we're continuing to have conversations about how can we make it, continue to make that date still be firm? And right now, it's still firm. I don't have any doubts that we'll hit it. And I'll let you all know as soon as we think that it's going to change. This week, we're having several meetings about that, because it's a lot of work to get done. And that work, if you do put out multiple crews, then the cost of certain work increases. But we've been working with DOT on the, to allow, to extend that reimbursement, the 80/20 reimbursement. Some things that they had declared to be non-reimbursable, they're actually have found more understanding. And so us doing conduit, instead of putting that weight of installing that conduit on cobblestone, they are going to reimburse us for that. And so that's something that we're doing. But there are a lot of things that we'll continue to do. And again, I just want to say that when it opens, there'll still be work going on at the intersection. I want everybody to know that. And so it wasn't, people are measuring, I think, measuring progress visually of, they're not seeing asphalt, not seeing these things. The goal was not to have everything pristine and perfectly done. We are, even when we close, even when the intersection opens, we'll still be at 60% completion of the entire project. And so this project has been going on for over 18 months to date, and there will be another 18 months or so. The project isn't pegged to end until December 2025, early 2026. And so I want everyone to think, I know it's been a very uncomfortable season or stretch of time, the last 45 days, and it's been tough on all of us. It's been tough on the people that have been driving through, and it's also been tough on the staff as we continue to explain things to people, hear everyone, and try to find a way to move forward with the detours, the work, all these different things that takes into account everybody that is impacted. Those who come through the area and also the people who live in that media area, and most importantly, the small businesses that are there. We've been meeting with them, the cash mob that the chamber talked about, that was a byproduct of us meeting with them and showing our support towards the businesses. And so we understand that it's had an impact on them, but we're trying to do the best we can to alleviate it. There was a bit long-winded of an explanation, but I thought it was appropriate because there's, we understand that it's not just black and white, like we're going to build this. We know that anything you build impacts everybody. Anything you change impacts everybody, some people more than others. But we are committed to making sure that we get it done. And we're doing everything, we've had prior conversations, myself and the mayor, about what can we do? So we'll be tapping into other funding to help pay for those things that may go over. But the good thing is that we're able to go back to Campo, and we'll, I'll be bringing that up, excuse me, in the meeting that we have with Meredith and Campo, because the plan was always to go back to them at about 70, 85% completion, as we project where they might be quote overruns on certain things as, as a result to making field decisions and such, all of which typical with projects of this size, to get more funding from them to help get us across the finish line. So, but we're not seeing any immediate impact that will prevent us from keep.
That doesn't mean we run, the town is not running out of money.
No, we're not running out of money.
We just wanted paid for by state.
Correct.
It was the state running.
Yeah, the, we, I mean, I've only been three years, but this project started, the idea of it started in 2017, I believe. The only way that we're able to do it now is because of our partnerships and external funding from Campo and other sources to help make it happen, including, you know, partnership with Walbrook, they're, they're paying for certain things, we're doing some work for them to make it feasible for them. We partner with Cobblestone as well, certain things that we're doing for them to help. And so these are things that, we're not running out of money. We're backed by Campo. This is a locally administered project, and so the state wants to see the project happen. And we're doing it with them, for them, and in partnership. So everybody wants to see it happen, and we're not going to run out of money.
One thing that I think is important, and I think that we should do, is to be proactive in letting the community know, this is not going to be 100%. It's still going to be work that's going to be done, because I think people are expecting it to be done.
Okay.
And so I think if, if we do our part in educating people that this is ongoing and it's, things are going to be happening until the end of next year, I think it'll be easier if we get out front instead of September, the, in September, when the road opens and it's not complete, and having to deal with that, all those angry people that. So I think being proactive is going to help us in the long run.
I think we can work, I mean, we can actually, we can maybe work with East Wake, and they can take this conversation here and pull it out of the video, and we can run it on our social media as a reel or something, or extend it, extend it length. And also we'll think about other ideas.
The blast.
Social media.
Newsflash. Also, yep, thank you.
And this, but the thing that I found most beneficial was the conversation. We, we don't, anytime, I mean, you know, the quote rumor mills exist everywhere. Anytime that we've had anybody have a question or concern and they reached out, we've had a conversation with them to inform them. But it's really hard to have, to proactively communicate things where we are communicating and updating our language for the questions that we know people have.
Right.
That makes sense.
Right.
And at the front end of the project, we established an email address and a phone line that gets very, very little activity. And we've probably had one email to it in the last six weeks. And that's because people talk to each other about it and not necessarily to us about it.
You know they want to talk on Facebook to get the community.
And we have, and then on Facebook, there are several community groups. We try, but there are more community groups having the conversation than we can count and that we're aware of.
Yeah.
And so whenever anybody comes to us and asks us, we definitely tell them, we provide them the information we need, that they need. And we take the conversation with those one or two residents and use it to focus on what should we say in our news blasts?
That's great, but if there is a blurb that if we see it online, we can put that link in there to squash some of the rumor mill and let people know, well, these are the facts, and this is what's happening. I think that might help some.
Okay.
For us to do our part.
Yeah, and the other part I want to mention is, whenever you have a project like this, hiccups happen.
Yes.
They're no one's fault, but it's, it's good, I think, to air those as well. And I, my understanding is we had a water line or sewer line that we didn't know existed where it was, that, that causes problems. You know, it interrupts our ability to act. And I think we had a permitting issue that came up out of the blue.
That's correct.
After we had the permits and we got stuck with adding additional permits, that takes time.
Yes.
And that's through no fault of the town. But, you know, these are the things, like April's saying, it's good for our residents to know that we are working on this, and just because no one's working there on a given day, that things are being done.
Correct.
Or being acted on that have to be done in order for us to be able to do the work that needs to be done. So I just, I think it's good that the more information that we can put out to our town, the better off we're all going to be.
Yes, thanks for, thanks for bringing it up, Commissioner Paul. So an example would be with Duke Energy. You know, we ended up being, the utility relocation ended up being delayed because Dominion had to get in, they're moving in a certain order. And so when the Duke Energy relocation of utilities was slowed down, they added, we worked with them to add additional crews to still meet the deadline. And so if you see a day or two where there's suspended work, that doesn't mean the work won't get done. We're doing everything we can on the back end to add in additional work, additional hours or what have you to do that. But we want to make sure that we're positioning ourselves to do, to put in infrastructure that's ultimately, number one, safe, number two, that does not have to be redone. In some cases, we're going to be able to, we're going to put in some temporary measures that can be removed and replaced to allow us to open the intersection. And those are some of the key decisions that we're having to bring, come down with right now and work with DOT to get approved. But thankfully, when we say temporary, it gives us more wiggle room, because they require a lot of testing for the final surfaces of, that support their vehicles and such, but.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think, I think even, it's gone on for two months now, so I think when day 60 or close to 60, or maybe we just passed 60. You know, one of the things that, you know, talking to Eric from the very beginning, is, you know, we're not going to allow all these excuses for not meeting a date. And it's been enough excuses that we could use to say, we can't meet the date. And we've said all along, we're going to push hard. And I, I mean, I, I don't care if it's an excuse where, like, like, you know, like, like you said, the, the water line was discovered. That's a big, that's a big excuse. And it could, we could very well use that and say, we're going to be delayed. Or, you know, they come out here and determine that the permit, they want to change the permit and now include people, places outside of the work zone, which is not, they changed the rules on us.
Yes.
But we're not going to make that excuse. We're not going to make a private owner that was supposed to do certain things in the project that still hasn't done it.
Right.
That we have to, we had to do it ourselves. We're not going to make that excuse, and we're not going to let Duke Energy make that excuse. We've, we've tried to say, and Eric has done a very good job, there's been a normal, you call it hiccups.
Yep.
You know?
Big ones.
Big, big hiccups, big hiccups. You call them big hiccups, but I think some of the people that's, that are stakeholders, they call it, well, these are excuses. And we've, we try, we try not to make excuses part of the problem.
And most of these things are typical to large-scale capital improvement projects. But the thing that I find here is that this is the first one we've had, and a lot of people aren't accustomed to that. And when they hear certain things like a hiccup or these, it's, it's like how to use the com, the most common language. And so there are pivots you have to make and field decisions you have to make with everything. We're dealing with infrastructure that has been here longer than some of us has been alive, and it's the first time anybody's cracked the top of the asphalt in years. And so we found whole water lines, we found sewer lines, we found an abandoned well that has to be filled, like, and when they dug down, there was like, wait, this is a well. So they covered it up, now we have to fill the well. We found contaminated soil. We got it done. And so these are things you just find, we're just hoping that we're, one thing that we're trying to do, and we have been doing, is try to negate the impact these things are having on. We're doing the best we can to negate the impact that's happening on residents and businesses, detours, putting in speed humps, putting in traffic control measures, all those things, as we continue to move the project forward and get the need to get the infrastructure that needs to be built, established, put in, complete. And so we're not waiting until we get the intersection done to help alleviate issues. We're working on the issues and working on the cause of certain things at the same time. But we just ask everybody to continue to be patient with us. We have enlisted everybody to help move it forward. We help the residents. We apologize for the inconvenience. I apologize every day to somebody for the inconvenience, and we really do mean that. And we're just, want to keep in mind that the vision of, that you all have for the downtown, the vision that the project is supporting, we believe is of value and will be worth it. So we know that this season right now is uncomfortable, this last 45 days, this summer, but hopefully it'll be just a blip in time, that people say, you remember when it was kind of messy down there? Dang, well, look at it now. And so that's, that's the day we're pushing towards, to where it's more walkable, it's more safe, and then there's a thriving small business, local business ecosystem down and throughout our entire corridor. And so that's what we're aspiring for, that's what I try to remind everybody of. But there's a process that we all have to kind of go through to get to that place. But we're doing well, things are moving along, and we'll continue to work to get updates to everybody about everything.
Well, I thank you, because I know it's not easy, and it's huge, and there are hiccups every day, I'm sure. So we appreciate all the hard work that you and the staff are putting.
Yeah, and it's really hard for the, on the staff too, because we really care.
Yeah.
It's keeping some of us up at night, like, literally. And so we're, we're trying, and we're doing our best, and we're working on every solution, and we're knocking on every door we can to move certain things forward. And we're thankful to Fred Smith's company, who's been basically a partner with us to get it done. They've made some big steps and strides and done some things they typically don't do to help us move it forward. And so we're looking forward to having conversations with them later this week, as we kind of look at the home stretch, we're getting it back open.
But we know you've been tested through this, and we're not done yet, but thank you for your fortitude, for sticking, sticking with it, and for helping us get a passable intersection on September 5th, which is what everyone wants. But I just want to make sure everyone knows what it's taking for the town and you to get us there. It's a, it's a big ordeal, and, and it could have slipped a lot worse, and if we can get open on the 15th, that's, that's to your credit as well.
Yeah, we're still on the front side of the eight ball.
Yeah, I think.
It's okay.
I think it's fair to say, if the town wasn't involved in it, Eric wasn't involved in it, it probably wouldn't be open on the September 15th.
Right, no.
If it was up to Fred Smith and those folks, it would not be open on the 15th.
Yeah, agreed.
So thank you.
I think he's working very hard and.
We know that.
Trying to push that, push that ball down the road in this, you know. It's historically known DOT rope and contractors don't never finish on time.
Ever.
But thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that. So with that, I think we do have a closed session. Anybody have the motion?
I do.
Okay.
I moved to, I moved that the board go into closed session to discuss a confidentiality personnel matter. The board would enter closed session pursuant to chapter 143, section 318 dot 11 A6 of the North Carolina general statutes.
Okay, got a motion there, second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second. Okay, we will recess into a closed session naturally after the closed session is ended, we will come back in chamber for open session to, to gavel close there. So thank you, appreciate everybody that showed up tonight, thanks very much. And at this time, we're going to recess into closed session.
I'll call back to order. The Board of Commissioners' work session, we just closed a executive session in pursuit of NGC 143-318 and we had an employee evaluation. So with that, I think we have concluded the business of tonight. Is there any closing comments from the board? Thank you, Eric. Anything from you? You did a very good, I want the committee to do a very good job updating us on the closure of the intersection up there. So appreciate that. Thank you. I think if we're just counting weekdays, I think it's 18 weekdays left is what I was informed by somebody just monitoring it. So let's make sure we are very productive on all 18 days that we can be and continue to work on that. So it's going to be, you know, we're going to get out of this situation soon. But any other things? What would we, we do have a holiday coming up in a couple of weeks, so I hope everybody enjoy that. And then we'll come back together after the first of September. So unless I hear opposition, I'm going to adjourn the meeting for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.